...and business meeting of the Rock Hill School Board for December 2018. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce Mr. Tamariam Watkins, who's a fifth grader at Mount Gallant, and he will provide the call to order tonight. Welcome.
Good evening, Mrs. Miller, members of the board, Superintendent Cook, and the ladies and gentlemen of the audience. I'm Tamariam Watkins, a fifth grader at Mount Gallant Elementary School. I am honored to represent Mount Gallant and to bring greetings from our principal, Mr. Jacob Moree, and the faculty and staff of Mount Gallant Elementary. Please stand with me at this time and remain standing for a moment of silence and then for the pledge of allegiance. Now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. It's now my pleasure to tell you about my experience as a Mount Gallant night. I've attended Mount Gallant Elementary since kindergarten and has been a fun experience. I've made a lot of friends throughout the years and I've really enjoyed certain projects and activities that I've done with classmates. One project was this year in fifth grade with my teacher, Mrs. Douglas. We had to think of a meal that our parents that our parents have made and develop a recipe for that meal. My recipe was all about my mom and dad's delicious lasagna. I'm pretty sure that my recipe, if made, would taste better than my parents'. Last week, junior beta club went on a field trip to the Applied Technology Center, or ATC. We toured different classrooms and we were able to share if we were interested in taking a specific class. I was interested in digital arts and culinary arts. We also got to meet the volunteers to help with Back to Pack. If you don't know, Back to Pack is a program for people of any age to get meals if they don't have enough to eat on the weekends. I think this program is pretty cool, to be honest, because it helps those who don't have enough. I've made a lot of great memories at Mount Gallant. There's nothing like being a night. Thank you for inviting me to represent Mount Gallant Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. He is joined here tonight by his mother, Twana Watkins, his dad, Martrell Harnog, and also his sister, Tamara, who is a first grader at Mount Gallant. We also have Ms. Leonard, the assistant principal, the media specialist, Ms. Smith, and the art teacher, Ms. Gregory, here with us tonight to support you. You did a phenomenal job, and I will tell you something, you have a kind heart, and for that, I'm so proud of you. There's nothing like being a knight, because so am I, because all my three kids have gone through there. So with that said, I am going to open up for questions, because I'm sure my fellow board members have something they want to ask you. Ms. Reed.
I'm so proud of you. I'd like to say that although I didn't go to Mount Gallant, I'm sure anybody who has gone there will be as proud as I am to hear all of the nice things you had to say about Mount Gallant. I'd like to know, though, if if when you leave Mount Gallant, I'm gonna steal Ms. Douglas's question, is there anything about Mount Gallant that you would like to see changed?
I would think that before every test, like one or two days before every normal test, we can have a pre-test to see if the kids know the material before they test on it.
Oh, that's a good one. Thank you. Hope the teachers, hope the principal is listening.
She's nodding in the back.
Very good.
Ms. Cole?
Asking for more tests. That's pretty amazing for a student. I see your art teacher is here, so you must like art. Can you tell me one of the projects that you've done with Ms. Gregory that you've really enjoyed?
I've enjoyed a lot. I really enjoy the project that we're doing now, though. We're doing like the Harlem, we're doing the Harlem Renaissance and like make, becoming, if we were like, we had a hit single from back then, what would our record look like?
Yeah, she, she's a great art teacher. She always says great things for y'all to do.
Okay, so Ms. Reed stole my questions. I'm a two-question person, okay? All right, the first thing I'd like to know is, what is something very special at Mount Gallant you have enjoyed?
Friends and teachers.
Okay, good job. All right, now, you're in the fifth grade, so you're gonna be getting ready. You've finished almost a half a semester, so you halfway to the middle school. So what are your plans or what do you think about middle school?
From what my friends, from what my cousins have told me, they told me it's pretty nice.
Are you excited about getting ready to go? I noticed that you played football with the Rock Hill All-Stars. How did the games go this year?
Oh, they were kind of easy, but they were fun, 'cause we started becoming friends as we played on and on, but
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It had to end.
The teachers and staff at Mount Gallant. Ms. Douglas opened up a door here for the football aspect of it. Are you looking forward to being a Gator football player? Dutchman Creek?
Oh, yeah.
Now, with that look, that tells me Florida's not your angle.
Okay, thank you so much. Enjoyed the last few days of school before the break, and let's give him a round of applause. So the local news media was notified in writing of the combined work session business meeting agenda twice. First on Thursday, December 6th, and again on Sunday, December 16th, because last week's meeting was postponed due to inclement weather. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the work. We got, it's been moved by Wendy Cole, seconded by Ms. Reed. Any changes? No? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. Great. First up is a set of second read policies. We have discussed these at one work session and also briefly at last month's business meeting. Policies A through I, or A through H is BG, well, these will, when we vote on them, if passed during the business meeting later on tonight, will become policy. Do we have anything that we feel like we need to discuss in this list? And I'll go through and read them. EBAB, EBBA, EBBA dash R, EBC, ECA, ECA dash R, ECAE, ECAE two, ECAF, ECAF dash R, EEAE, EEAE C, EGAD, EGAD dash R.
Can you elaborate on the, because the members of the audience won't know what those
Sure. We can sure do. So the first policy is hazardous materials. The second one is prevention of deceased and infection transmission. Third one is emergencies. Fourth one is security. Fifth one is video cameras on district property. Sixth one is bus safety program. Seventh is student conduct on buses. And the eighth one is copyright compliance.
That's good, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Anything that anybody would like to discuss, neither one of those?
I do have a question. Mr. Cox would probably be the one to answer. On EBAB hazardous materials, especially since we've got art teacher in here, I know some companies like will not let employees bring anything that is not on approved list. And I didn't know if we have anything like that, or if we just try and minimize what materials are brought in.
We do ask that everyone, we do ask that everyone who does bring in materials such as these to the school environment, let the administration know as well as our Facilities Department, our Safety and Security Department. The reason for that being is that schools are under commercial standards. There is a very different set of environmental regulations that applies to the same chemical if it is used in a residential environment. When you bring a bottle of Mr. Clean from home to work, it now is subject to a lot different, a commercial set of regulations. So we ask first that that be minimized, that that not be done. Second, if it is to be brought in, that the administration's informed and we can treat those chemicals as part of our existing inventory in the school.
Okay, and then all of the staff knows that they need to
They are being, they have been trained on that and they will continue to be. It's something that we just have to do as part of our housekeeping every year. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Cox. Next policy is I, Policy IC School Year, upper second read. Would Mr. Frost come up, please?
Madam Chairman, Dr. Cook, members of the board, pleasure to speak with you this evening about Policy IC School Year. After we last met, I was able to make recommended changes, both that you guys asked for specifically, as well as feedback submitted by several employees who were, who was able to share opinion on the initial draft. That is designated in the draft that is in your packet, both in red and blue writing. What questions may I entertain about Policy IC?
Just for the purpose of the audience, if you could just highlight the process briefly of how these, this policy was coming to effect and what the thought process and who has been involved in it.
Okay. Policy IC, as Ms. Miller indicated, Policy IC says, it sets the parameter for the school year and how our school year is defined as it relates to the calendar. There is a committee of 39 individuals that came together this year to develop the calendar. Part of their work was to entertain the idea of approving multiple years' worth of calendars at a single time. Under current policy, that is not allowable, and so this policy, Policy IC, was adjusted both to accommodate that request, as well as several years running now of that same question being asked to our community who chose to participate in our calendar feedback survey, with at least 64% support over the last three years for approving two calendars at one time. And in essence, in able to do that, this policy had to be adjusted. So that's the, in a nutshell, what we are asking for this evening.
Thank you. And like always, we have solicited feedback from our community, and we've had a couple of people who have responded, one in favor and one against. You should see those two comments in your, in your board packet. Any questions that anybody has?
And Madam Chair, I think you have a third policy at your seat you should have. Did we get that to all board members, Michael?
A third feedback, yes.
Okay, perfect.
But the other ones speak specifically to the calendar, not to the policy.
Yep, you're correct.
Yes. Anybody have any questions about the policy specifically?
I have one.
Sure.
Why was there a need to, to change the way it has been going? We have now, we are now discussing a two-year advance plan. Why was that necessary?
There's been an interest under the current and former administration to pursue this. We have taken several years to gauge feedback, as I just indicated. A survey that's been administered each of the last three years related to the calendar has addressed this very question, to gauge interest from the community and the level of support. In each time we've asked the question, there has been significant support to move in this direction. What does it achieve? It allows us, as a district, to be more proactive in our planning, be more efficient in our planning. It also allows those exact same things to our families and to our businesses here in Rock Hill that support the school district to be better able to plan more than a year in advance, whether it's a family seeking travel arrangements, or it's a business seeking relationships with vendors and companies that may need more than a year notice to coordinate schedules.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think a lot of companies now are requiring you to put in family vacation time with a fairly far in advance notice, and that's where some of the feedback is coming from our parents, I believe. Anybody else have anything they would like to add on the policy? No?
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One of the comments indicated that the language under "make up days" seems to be a little contradictory in that the first sentence
But that would be technically, well, you can, you can address it now. It doesn't matter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 you can address it now, but it technically would be under the calendar, but it's okay.
One of the comments indicated that the language within that "make up days" section was a little contradictory, in that it started out by saying that the district will make up all days lost to snow or weather, and then it goes on to explain that there are some other exceptions to that. It doesn't appear that that was really changed, but you do not feel that, that the wording of it contradicts itself within that section?
The blue text under "make up days" was added as of the last board meeting to clarify what the process is beyond days three, missed days, beyond three missed days. So the blue text in that paragraph addresses the process, and that was added at the request of the board following our last meeting.
But the first sentence still reads, "The district will make up all days lost to snow, extreme weather conditions, or other disruptions." And so I'm wondering if that sentence should be augmented to say within the following parameters or with the following exceptions, because essentially we won't make up all days if we end up forgiving days either as a board or because the state forgives certain days.
The day is, the day is accounted for through the action of the board, so the day is made up by way of a waiver.
Okay.
Okay.
And then one other comment, and this relates back to the calendar itself and the two years' worth of calendars. I understand the community's need and the parents' need to plan. I understand the districts' need to plan. And I, and maybe I'm just a happy optimist in thinking that at some point, the legislature will allow us to set our own start date. And my worry is that by approving two calendars in a row, we are committed to that, even if, even if the legislature would allow us to move back the start date. Is there any?
There's actually a provision already in here. In the calendar that we'll go over, it actually has in red
I don't want to, I don't want to skip ahead, but we're aware of that exact concern. We share that concern, but that shouldn't be a single point to dismantle the effort, because we have, we reserve the right in future years or future months, should state law change. We would like to share in your optimism. So should state law change, we would reserve the right to come back before this body and ask for an adjustment to that calendar or future calendars.
And I think that's great. I would be reluctant at that point as a board member to make that change, because once we put it out there as the official approved calendar, people will start making plans based on that calendar. So as a board member, I would be reluctant to approve a change after the fact, once we had a published official calendar, just as a
I tend to agree with you. I think it depends on how much flexibility we have with the start date and where the adjustments would be made. If it would be feasible to do so without inconveniencing people and making too much of a headlock of the calendar, I would be okay with it. But I agree with you that we couldn't necessarily go back and make drastic changes.
I would just hate for us not to be able to take advantage of an early start date if the legislature came to its senses and allowed our board to make fundamental decisions about the start date of our school year.
And to that point, Ms. Owens, one of the things that we would give a lot of consideration to would be the timing of when we would find that information out. So if we get to a point where it's late in the year, we would, we would give serious thought to whether we would even bring that back to you to consider. So it is, it is a little bit of a challenge with the variabilities of not knowing what might happen, especially in the spring session.
Thank you.
I may have to save this for during the business session, but a calendar's like anything else. You can make your plans, but always have adjustments available. The legislature's gonna come out, if they do this, they're gonna give us a year's notice to enact on what we need. They'll give parents plenty of time to rearrange their schedules and everything, and I don't really know if too many people that plan vacations two years in advance, unless they're saving money for it. That's a different ballgame.
But we're kind of assuming they are by approving two years' worth of calendars. So I just think, once we say it's an official calendar, we have to stick to it.
Pretty much right here on the bottom of this, it says it, the disclaimer, "In the event of changes in the law." We're not gonna make everybody happy, but I think it's a wise idea to do the two years.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay.
It's just interesting, though, that as we consider a calendar for two years in a row, would that, would that cause people to think their contracts also should be considered two years in a row?
I mean, I think it's a fair question, but I believe the two are exclusive of one another.
Bearing no more comments on the policy, we can move forward to item J, which is the two calendars. So it's Mr. Frost again, and you should have printouts in front of you as well.
Welcome back, members of the board. Figure we have a little dramatic pause.
Yes.
Before you, you have both copies of the calendar. For those of you watching online or in the audience, it's available in the packet, available on our website. I want to stress, since it just came up in the previous discussion, it will be, a statement will be included on the published calendars, and I'll just read it for the benefit of everyone. "In the event state laws change to allow an adjustment to the start date, district administration may seek approval of an earlier start date." In Dr. Cook's message a moment ago, there would be varying factors that would certainly be at play to determine if we would even do that, depending upon the timing of any action in the legislature, being responsible and understanding to the timing factor of when we would make, when we would potentially ask for a change to what we hope to approve this evening. I want to go through a quick presentation, just briefly, just so we all understand how we arrived at tonight. Our committee was comprised of 39 individuals representing every single school in the district, as well as students, parents, faculty, and administration. This is the first time in the last four years in which all schools were at the table for this development, which I believe also gives credence to the two-year conversation, that we were represented by all audiences and all schools this time. The members of the committee are listed in your packet, if you're curious as who participated. We had three meetings in October and November focusing on a task to develop a calendar that we would bring forth for recommendation to the school board that adhered to South Carolina state law and met as many local preferences and local criteria as possible. As someone eloquently said a moment ago, "It is the calendar, and we know, we understand, and we recognize that we will not make everyone happy through this process." We take as many wins as we can, and we work to make as many folks happy through this process, but it is, it is a process in which you, everyone will not win, but hopefully someone, everyone gets something. A reminder for everyone that this, a reminder as well as a brief education on how the law is restricted. We've acknowledged that state law puts some restrictions on us, but just so we understand what some of those are. South Carolina Code of Law is 59-1-425, outlines the parameters for this. The one piece that I believe gives us the greatest heartbreak, heartburn, is the third Monday start date. And that kind of sets our starting line, and everything else falls in line after that. That creates difficulties in achieving a district objective, which is to offer our high school students the opportunity to complete first semester prior to Christmas break. We do our best, and you'll see on the two drafts this evening, we've achieved that in both. The calendar law also dictates there's 180 student days with 190 teacher days. So there's additional 10 days for teachers, and those are spread out of five professional, professional development days and five teacher work days. The calendar law also stipulates that we must include in our calendar three make-up days. It doesn't say when you have to do them or how you must do them, but it says you must include three. So in the Policy IC, we address that by scheduling three, and then it also defines the process, how we would then go about asking our local board, our state board, and ultimately the General Assembly for forgiveness of days, depending on how many we end up missing in a given year. So that, in a nutshell, provides the sandbox that we get to play in when we begin this process, and then we go from there. The calendar committee has worked through, there's multiple meetings, as well as the feedback from our stakeholders to develop these two calendars and made adjustments to reflect the feedback. And that is worth pointing out as well. In both years, the calendar is designed to maintain three full days off for Thanksgiving, finishing high school exams prior to Christmas break, aligning our spring breaks with our neighboring districts in York County. The question that always comes up there is, do we extend that partnership and that alignment with Lancaster and Chester and Charlotte Mecklenburg and Union and Gaston? And as nice as that would be, we try to take care of York County, and if the others want to follow us, that would be great. But it's hard enough to get the four of us in the county to hold hands on that single issue, so if we can do that, it's a success. We've also built in the bad weather days, the inclement weather days, to not negatively impact teacher professional development. In the 2021 school year, the second year that we would be looking at this evening, we have been able, due to how that third Monday falls, we've been able to include a make-up day within the fall semester. That is not possible, given the number of days available to us in the fall of 2019, but fast-forwarding to 2020, it is possible, so we wanted to take advantage of that, given our recent history of winter weather, or inclement weather, I should say, in the fall semester. I've mentioned several times, we administered a stakeholder input survey. That survey had nearly 1,000 responses. It's nice to note that that's double the amount that participated two years ago. So this process is working. We are listening, and we do what was best we can to incorporate feedback from, from each of those surveys. Indicated about the make-up day, that's been a hot topic recently, of the lost time, instructional time in the fall. We go in knowing that that's a risk, and so we asked our community, and of the nearly 1,000 people that responded, 53% believe we should try to do that, so we have tried. And as I indicated, we, we're not successful in this next year, but in the following year, we are able to do that. 84% believe it's important to offer exams before Christmas. We've been able to do that, as indicated on both drafts this evening. Hot topic just a moment ago, 58% suggest that we should make a change if an earlier date, if a change to state law happens to allow us to start earlier, we should take advantage of that change. So we of that change. So we anticipated your question, and we asked our community of how they would want us to react to that change. As I also indicated, past surveys show strong support for seeking this two-year approval that we are doing this evening. Just quick highlights of both calendars, for benefit of those watching, as well as in the audience. The survey presented three options that were original, are three original drafts. The draft in the packet is essentially option A, and that was favored 63%, but you had three choices. So theoretically, it'd be a lot higher if you knocked off the lowest choice. First day of the semester would be August 19th, the last day of the school year being June 4th, and the semester, first semester ending on Friday, December 20th. It would look very much like this week, a year from now. Oftentimes, throughout the work of the committee, there's a debate, pretty contentious debate at times, of how many days of the, is winter break? How many weekends does it include? How many weekdays, et cetera? So just to point out, there's 15 total days off for teachers during the winter break, and there are 17 days off for students. It's a pretty substantial break when you think of it in terms of days. Thank you to the leap year. We gain a day to play with on the 19-20 calendar that we don't typically have available. Our makeup days are set of April 13th, May 22nd, and May 29th. Spring break, April 6th through 10th. Graduation, the first Saturday in June, June 6th of 2020. Pretty much the same highlights for 2021, favored by 74% of the survey respondents. Also, again, 85-95 day semester split. As I indicated a moment ago, we do allow ourselves a makeup day in the fall. So that is an extra day that could have been 86 instructional days with no makeup opportunity in the fall, or we did 85 days with a makeup day. And so that's what the recommendation is this evening. Winter break, 12 days for the teachers and 14 days for students. Fall of 2020, November of 2020, will be a general election. State law, that law mentioned a moment ago, indicates that we must close our facilities for use of the school, for a school day on a general election day. So we lose a day on the calendar, so why we gained a day on the previous spring. So it's all about a trade-off. Beautiful process. Spring break, same week, April 5th through the 9th, 2021. Graduation on my anniversary, June 5th, 2021. What questions might you have after that lightning round?
I just have a quick comment. I want to say thank you to all the people who serve in this calendar committee. As you listen to the parameters that they are given between holidays and state laws and all the other things that they have to take into consideration, this is not an easy task. As Mr. Frost indicated, there is no way to make everybody happy. So just a thank you to all those people who have put in a lot of hours trying to make the best of a not-so-great situation.
Thank you.
Ms. Cole?
One on the 2021, we have an October 16th makeup date. If we do not have any inclement weather until after October 16th, and we have three or more days, we will have to find another day?
That day will be passed, therefore, it's not available. We do not have to find a third day. We scheduled three days. We can't help that Mother Nature didn't help us and allow us to use it. So if we've passed, it's not available. We then have two left for the spring.
Excellent. And then up to three half-days to be determined on each one. What is the timeline that we would know that?
Typically, the half-days are the last day of first semester and the last two days of the school year. And that would follow historical precedence in our district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
If, excuse me, if there is a child who comes to our schools after our startup time, and they have missed most of the ones that are in August, they don't come until after Labor Day, how do we adjust their, how do we adjust our intake for them?
Can I defer to Dr. Cook for that question?
Sure. Ms. Reed, that's a great question, and it really kind of depends on when their entry date is. We do not penalize them for not being on our schedule. What we do is look at what classes they've been taking, or what they were scheduled for, and then we work with our schools, or our schools work with our students, to try and make sure that they have the instructional pieces and the hours. So they may have to go and kind of catch up with some of the assignments that have already been assigned, but really teachers assess where they are and try and go from that point. So the schools work very closely with them. We're used to that. We get a lot of families from the north coming in after Labor Day, so working very closely with them at the school level.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the calendars? Nope. Okay. Moving on to number K, which is procurement code revision. Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Madam Chair, Board, in your package, you have a revision to procurement code. On October the 23rd, 2017, the Board approved a revision at the district administration's request that our consolidated procurement code, along with the attendant policy DJ, be approved, and it was. Based on feedback from the state and an opportunity for us to revisit that policy and look at some guidance through the material management office, we would like to use the timeline that we have submitted to you and make the recommendation to you that the Board simply rescind the approval on October 23rd, 2017, and August 28th, 2017, of the procurement code, and continue using the July 1, 2008 procurement code. So we'd like to make that recommendation to you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions? Mr. Fockenberry?
I was just going to say that for the people that are out there that don't necessarily know the history of this, we are still in compliance with this previous code. It was just we were trying to catch up to what the new requirements will become. And so it was more of a preventive measure, but what we presented wasn't accepted. So we're going back to the old code until we can come up with a new code that will be accepted by the state.
And we feel like we have some good opportunity here to revisit that code and provide some more similarities to what is expected through the management office. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments, questions? No. Then we have item L, which is selection of attorneys, legal services firms, policy BDG.
And Mr. Cox is going to talk about that process, of course. And Ms. Lawanna Robinson-Lee?
Good evening. Good evening, Ms. Miller, Superintendent Cook, members of the board. Our policy BDG, which is attorneys and legal services policy, is, has a requirement for the Board to approve any new law forms that we have that we take onboard. It does not require it to be procured through the competitive process in our procurement code. However, the Board in previous work sessions has decided that it would be best to approach a selection of new attorneys using a competitive process. It's outlined in state code, as well as our own procurement code, called a qualifications-based selection procedure. And the Board gave us a go-ahead to solicit firms within the state to be qualified to be, take it onboard or retained as attorney services. We already have some that currently serve that function in various capacities for the Board. Ms. Robinson-Lee led the process, called the RFQ, the Request for Qualifications, and a selection committee made up of Dr. Cook, Dr. Keith Wilks, and two community members, Ms. Rhonda Savage, and also Mr. Rick Lee, who have experience in some of the areas that we retain attorneys typically, to evaluate proposals. That proposal evaluation process was conducted in accordance with the standard procedures we have in our procurement code, and a set of firms was selected. Ms. Lee, did you want to further elaborate on that from my setup here?
So we had four different firms to submit, and we had a selection criteria that we, that the panel used to evaluate the responses that came in. And from that evaluation, we were able to add to the business corporate, which is Lot 1, Anderson, Reynolds &amp; Stevens, and to Lot 3, Haynesworth, Sinclair, Boyd, which is personnel and employment. And for Lot 4, real estate, it's also Haynesworth, Sinclair, and Boyd. Not too much more information can be given because we're still in the procurement process. If you are approved tonight, then further information can be provided.
Do you have any comments, questions?
Yes, a question. Which one of these firms would handle intergovernmental processes?
The way that the solicitation was done, it was done in four lots or practice areas. Area number one, or Lot 1, is referred to as business and corporate law. That also includes governmental relations. That would be your lot for intergovernmental agreements.
That's all I need is a no.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Robbins?
I have a statement, Madam Chairman. My employment as chief operating officer at Morton &amp; Gaddis, who's a current legal service provider to Rock Hill Schools, presents a conflict of interest with respect to this matter. So I'll excuse myself from deliberating and voting on this issue.
Thank you so much. Mr. Fockenberry?
Just a clarification on the proposed additional firms. It still looks like we're still missing two spots, one in student affairs for Lot 2, and one for personnel employment. Is that right?
Two, student affairs and personnel employment. Yes, sir. But I won't say that we're missing. We made a determination, the panel made a determination, that we were going to have up to four, up to three, three, and three. So during the selection, or the evaluation of the responses, there was a criteria that had to be met, and out of that, only these firms met that criteria.
So we wouldn't be adding one more in each of those lots? This is what we're going to go with? It was just a...
Correct, correct, if you approve.
The Board actually set the number of those firms in each lot, or the selection committee, excuse me, set a number of firms there as a maximum guideline.
This is just a matter of how it's listed in the packet, but explain to me why the firm of Haynesworth, Sinclair, and Boyd is listed twice, where the other law firms that have several areas are listed on one line item. Why do we have two for the same law firm?
That could be just, I added that extra line in there, too. It could be that Haynesworth, Sinclair, and Boyd would be on the same line for Lot 3 and 4. There's no difference in that.
I think that's an administrative error.
Stop checking, confirming. Yes. Anything else? Okay. Well, we are up to, thank you so much. We are up to the last item on our work session, which is board retreat date. As you remember from the last meeting, we were waiting on confirmation on our facilitator. As it is now, we have confirmation, so you will be asked to approve the board retreat for January 17th. We will plan to have a light breakfast from 8:00 to 8:30, and begin our meeting at 8:30 to 2:30, and with a working lunch. So if you have any questions? No? Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the work session part of this evening. Moved by Brent Fockenberry, seconded by... Terry Hutchinson. Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. We stand adjourned. We are about 10 minutes, and then we will reconvene for our business meeting. Two meetings in one evening. Fun, huh? Welcome to the December business meeting of the Rock Hill School Board. As I mentioned earlier at our work session a few minutes ago, the local news media was notified twice in writing on December 6th and on Sunday, December 16th. I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
Moved by Mildred Douglas, seconded by Ann Reed. Any discussions? All those in favor? All opposed? Passes 7-0. Before we get started, today is a very special day. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, all our students and staff, I would like to wish our dear superintendent a happy birthday. Yes?
Thank you.
And I'm going to step out of my comfort zone, and I hope that, please, all of you join me.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Dr. Cook. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, thank you. Matt? Should I open this now or wait, Ms. Miller?
Oh, you can wait.
Okay, thank you.
You can wait. So after that, I will now turn it over to Dr. Cook for a recognitions for the evening.
Well, I wish to thank the Board and certainly those in the audience for this recognition. So thank you. I appreciate that. I'm going to ask Mr. Terry Hutchinson to join me for our recognitions this evening. It's always a pleasure, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Board members, to conduct our recognitions. We had hoped to have these last Monday night, but inclement weather certainly changed that. And so we will be recognizing those who couldn't be with us tonight on our next board meeting in January. But those who we had hoped to be sharing some delight in this evening and recognizing is, first, we want to recognize Straight Heron, who's the football coach at South Point High School. On October the 19th, South Point High School defeated Ridgeview in a nail-biter 38-35. The victory earned head coach Straight Heron his 100th career victory at the school. The following week, at York, the Stallions downed York to claim the region championship and set the stage for a run in history, a fifth consecutive state championship. The story would end with a last-second overtime loss to Daniel High School. Through the years, the Stallions, under Coach Heron's leadership, soared to national prominence while representing Football City, USA. While we will miss Coach as he retires to pursue other opportunities, tonight, we say thank you for the commitment to student athletes at South Point, and congratulations on being the fastest coach in South Carolina High School League history to reach 100-win plateau. So let's give Coach a big round of applause. We are sorry he could not be with us this evening. We thought he would be, but other plans have taken him away from us this evening, but we are very appreciative to all his efforts. Our second recognition of the evening is recognition of our holiday card winners. For the first time, Rock Hill Schools held a contest for students to design the district's official holiday card. More than 75 entries were received in the inaugural contest from students from all grades. Tonight, we announce the winners for each level and reveal the grand prize winner whose design has been... whose design has been printed on 350 holiday cards that will be delivered this month to individuals and organizations who partner with Rock Hill Schools throughout the year. And I'm excited to say that Board members, you have one of those cards at your seat that you are being gifted with tonight. Each student who's being recognized tonight will receive a $25 gift card to Target. Our elementary winner is Jordan Madden, who is a kindergarten student at Mount Gallant Elementary School. So, Jordan, come on up.
Are you going to pick up to take a picture? A knee and ass.
All right. Thank you, Jordan. Congratulations.
You're going to take me out for lunch?
And Jordan is joined by so many, so her teacher, assistant principal, media coordinator, art teacher, parents, and we are excited for Jordan. Congratulations. Our middle school winner is Nina Greenlee, 7th grade Salute Trail Middle School. I hope I got that, pronounced that name. Come on up. Congratulations. That's awesome. Can we get our pictures taken with you? Wonderful. And she is joined by her family as well. We're glad to have them here with us as well. Our high school winner is Cameron Walker, and Cameron is also our grand prize winner. And Cameron could not be with us, but Cameron is from Rock Hill High School. And so, Ms. Soto, his art teacher is going to, yes, come on up and collect that prize for Cameron, and make sure he gets it tomorrow. Can we get our pictures with you? That concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. We have no citizen participation tonight, so we will move on to agenda item number four, which is our consent action agenda, under which we find the approval of personnel recommendations and the approval of the board retreat date of January 17th that we discussed earlier. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chairwoman, a motion we approve of the consent agenda.
A second. It's been moved by Terry Hutchinson and seconded by Mildred Douglas. Any discussion? Then all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. Moving on to our action agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve items number A through H, and I'm going to go ahead and read them. Approval of policy EBAB, EBBA, EBBA dash R, EBC, ECA, ECA dash R, ECA dash E1, and E2, ECAF, ECAF dash R, EEAE, EEAE dash R, EEAE dash E, EEAE C, and dash R, EGAD, and EGAD dash R. These are hazardous materials, prevention of disease, infection, transmission, emergencies, security, video cameras on district property, bus safety program, student conduct on buses, copyright compliance. Do I have a motion to approve that set, or does anybody want to pull either one of these policies? Ms. Cole?
I motion that be approved.
A second. I believe it was motioned by Ms. Cole and seconded by Mr. Hutchinson. Any discussion? Then all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes, seven zero. Moving forward to policy IC school year, which is also second and final read, and I probably should have stated that this was the second time that that set of policies we just voted on was voted, so it is now part of the Rock Hill School District's policy. So, approval of policy IC school year, second and final read. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
It has been moved by Mildred Douglas and seconded by Mr. Hutchinson. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those against? Motion passes, six one, with Owens against. Next is approval of the 2019-20 and the 2020-21 school calendars.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
A motion that we approved the 2019-20 and the 2020-21. That's a lot to say. New calendars.
It's been moved by Terry Hutchinson and seconded by Mildred Douglas. Any discussion?
Madam Chairwoman, is it possible to separate out these two years and vote on them independently, or will we be required to vote on them all as one?
Given that we just passed policy IC, which will make us do two school calendars at once, we, I believe we cannot separate them. They have to be approved as, as a unit.
Okay. I thought the policy gave us the option of approving more than one year, but not the requirement.
I will refer that to Michael Frost.
I believe as the policy is written, you'd have that option to, to separate them. Just because the policy says that we can do two doesn't mean we have to do two. So, if that's the pleasure of Ms. Owens, I believe that's for the Board to determine if its wish is to separate them and vote on them one at a time this evening.
We, we can absolutely do so. So, would you like to?
You can. I would have to amend my motion.
That's correct.
Yes, that is correct.
I will not.
You will not?
No. There's no need to.
Okay. Do we have a second on Mr. Hutchinson's motion?
I second.
Okay. Yes, we do. So, do we have any further discussion on that?
I would like to say one thing, Madam Chairwoman. I will be voting against the calendars, and, and I do want to thank, as you did, the Calendar Committee and the work of the committee, and the work of Mr. Frost in leading the committee. And I think that both calendars are very well thought out and well organized. I just am not in agreement that the district should hem itself in to two years' worth of calendars at this time. I, I, I just don't agree with that as a, as a course of action, but I think both calendars are wonderful drafts with the limitations that we currently have, according to our legislature, with how we must structure our school year.
Any other comments? Bearing no further comments, all those in favor, raise your hand. That is six. All opposed? One. Motion passes, six one, with Owens against. Next would be item K, which is our procurement code revision, policy DJ. Do we have a motion to approve that? Madam Chairwoman? Yes. I think there's a motion to be read that's.
I move that the Board rescind approvals on October 23rd, 2017, and October, August 28th, 2017, of amendments to the district's procurement code, which clarifies the district's procurement code approved on July 1st, 2018, as currently in effect.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. It has been moved by Robin Evans and seconded.
Madam Chair, I just want to make a clarification. Ms. Owens, you said July 1, 2018. Is that July 1, 2008?
Yes. I'm so sorry, July 1, 2008.
I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been seconded, seconded by Ms. Reed. Do we have any further discussion? Bearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. The next item up is L, selection of attorneys, legal services firm, firms. Ms. Owens has indicated that she will be abstaining from this because of a conflict of interest, so we will be six Board members voting. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I'd like to motion, make a motion to accept administration recommendation to appoint the following firms to advise and represent the district in the areas of business corp, student affairs, personnel employment, and real estate.
Thank you. Do I have a second? It's been seconded by Mr. Falkenberry, and moved by Ms. Douglas. Do we have any discussion? Bearing none, I will entertain, all those in favor, say aye. Thank you. All opposed? Motion, motion passes, six zero, with Owens abstaining. Next up is communications. We do not have one. And number seven would be report of the Superintendent. Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board members. This is the final week of the fall semester. Friday, December 21st is our last day of the semester, and students will be dismissed on a half-day schedule. Dismissal times are 11:00 a.m. for elementary schools, 11:30 for middle, and 11:45 for high. The district will be closed through Thursday, January 3rd. Teachers return on Friday, January 4th, followed by students on Monday, January 7th. As you know, safety and security is the number one priority for our students, staff, and families. Last month, we hosted a school safety summit in partnership with law enforcement partners Rock Hill Police Department and York County Sheriff's Office. More than 100 people were in attendance for the solutions-oriented discussions that will continue to help our schools remain safe. As was shared with those who attended, we will host another summit on Tuesday, January 29th. Please follow our social media pages and websites for updates and additional details on the January summit. Parents are invited to learn more about choice programs and college and career opportunities available to students of Rock Hill Schools at Choice Fair and District College and Career Expo to be held at South Point High School, 801 Neely Road, on Saturday, January 12th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Representatives from every high school will be available to provide information and answer questions about opportunities for students in our district. On Tuesday, December 11th, from 12:00 to 1:30, district leaders hosted a listen and learn session for faith-based leaders. We had approximately 30 leaders with us. We began a conversation with these leaders in our community that has much to offer to our students and staff. Additional listen and learn sessions for key stakeholder groups are being planned for the spring. On Thursday, December 13th, at 6:00 p.m., we hosted our third and final community listen and learn for the fall. The session was held at South Point High School. District leaders hosted the fourth teacher listen and learn information session for teachers across the district on Friday, December 14th. This series of meetings is providing a rich opportunity to engage in dialogue with teachers about celebrations, issues, and concerns for our school district. To view detailed responses to questions and concerns from past teacher listen and learn sessions, you're invited to visit, excuse me, www.rock-hill.k12.sc.us backslash T L L. Monthly sessions will continue second semester. District Teacher Forum on December 7th, school-level Teachers of the Year will come together, excuse me, came together for the second Teacher Forum meeting of the school year. Co-Chairs Susan Snyder and Northwestern High, and Melissa Tucker of Rock Hill High, along with district leadership, enjoyed working together with this group of teacher leaders. We had in our audience tonight, Ms. Melissa Smith from Mount Gallant, who represented that group at tonight's meeting. On December 7th, student leaders from each high school, the Applied Technology Center and Phoenix Academy, came together for a second superintendent student advisory council meeting of the school year. It's always a joy to work directly with our students and to address concerns that they have that are important to them. And then on Thursday, December 13th, representatives of the district Athletic Advisory Council traveled to T.O. Hannah High School in Anderson to learn more about the school and community, and how they have raised capital funds to improve and grow athletic facilities and opportunities for students. You're encouraged to visit the district's capital building program, Build on the Rock, website, www.rock-hill.k12.sc.us backslash Build on the Rock, for more information on capital projects. The website provides status updates on active and planned construction projects in the district. On the page, viewers can see project descriptions, before and after photographs, and construction timelines. And finally, the school board will meet on Monday, January 14th, for a work session. The meetings will begin at 4:00 p.m. Meetings are streamed on our website and available for viewing on demand immediately following each broadcast. We invite our community to watch meetings live on Facebook Broadcast at facebook.com/Rock Hill Schools. And finally, the school district and I would like to wish our Board of Trustees and all of our community members a wonderful holiday season. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cook. Next up is number eight, which is review of the school board work session, which we're not going to do because we just had it, so it's somewhat redundant. So, we're going to move swiftly to number nine, which is other and future business. I am going to pass out a, a calendar schedule for each one of the Board members that has all the training opportunities for you through the School Boards Association that you can look at your pleasure for, but we do have quite a bit of other things to, to cover. Number one is, the district hosts a, through volunteers, a competition called Math Counts. It's only a couple of months away. Normally, Ms. Douglas and I volunteer. It is a competition where students solve math problems. It's held at Westminster Presbyterian Church. It's on, held on February 12th this spring, between 9:30 and 12:30. And they are kindly asking for people to volunteer as graders. You do not have to work the math problems, you just have to check them. And, and I say that because if, if grading was the case, I would not be there. As you all know, we have the board retreat approved for the 17th. I would also like to highlight that on January 10th, you know, winter graduation is at 6:30 at Castle Heights. Couple of other things is that the Community Relations Council from the city of Rock Hill are hosting their annual MLK interfaith prayer breakfast. It's the 16th time they're doing this. It will be held on Monday, 20, January 21st, from 7:30 to about 9:00 a.m. And if you are interested in going, please let Ms. Gammons know so that she can register tickets for you.
Where are we going?
It's the MLK breakfast.
Oh, oh, oh.
If you want to go to that, let, let Ms. Gammons know. The other thing is, as, as Dr. Cook mentioned, you know, he had the interfaith meeting here earlier this week, and one of the groups that have been volunteering in our district has invited the whole board on Thursday morning this week at 7:45 to come visit at the Castle Heights Middle School to hear more about their program in the morning. And I will send out the details tomorrow if you would be interested in, in coming. But it's at Castle Heights Middle School, at the Professional Development Room. Breakfast will be served Thursday, December 20th, 7:45 to 8:20. And that concludes all the calendar items that we have coming up. As you all know, four of us attended one of the training sessions that were held by the South Carolina School Boards Association. So, I'd like everybody to, to talk a little bit very briefly about what, what we learned and share that with our fellow Board members. Ms. Owens, would you like to start?
Sure. If I get too long-winded.
That's okay.
I wanted to share the, the National School Boards Association priorities for the 116th Congress. Deborah Rigsby, who's the Program Director for NSBA, did a presentation at the, at the meeting where we attended. And basically, just to kind of list what their priorities are, full funding for the individuals. Full funding for the Individuals Disabilities Education Act is one of their priorities that they're attempting to pursue. I think that is something that they have been working on for quite some time. That's 1975 legislation to protect students with disabilities and ensure that they have free access to public education. Congress had committed to paying 40% of the cost of that, 40% of the national average, and they've never really done that. I think they're currently paying 16% of the national average to help educate students with disabilities. So that group is lobbying to increase that. Title II of the Higher Education Act is another priority that they have established. They're trying to prioritize reauthorization of Title II of the Higher Education Act, which funds grants to improve teacher education and teacher recruitment, professional development for school leaders and for teachers. Just as a note, Tim Scott, who is one of our senators, is a member of the Senate Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions Committee, which will hear that proposals, any proposals to reauthorize Title II of the Higher Education Act. They are also prioritizing reinstating advanced funding for municipal bonds in the federal tax code. I tried to study up on this just a bit so I could understand some of the things that she talked about. But basically, my layman's interpretation of this is that what the advanced funding for municipal bonds in federal tax code does is it allows for refinancing of tax-exempt bonds. And it's been used 57 times by South Carolina school districts alone, resulting in lower finance costs for infrastructure and operations. And then also, she emphasized the 2020 census. The federal government is really pushing, and the U.S. Census Bureau is encouraging school districts particularly, to establish and support complete count committees for the 2020 census. Of course, the census is conducted, a full census is conducted every 10 years. Census data is used for allocation and distribution formulas for federal funds in numerous programs. Our school district and all school districts have an interest in making sure that our population is completely counted so that we can receive full funding.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Douglas?
Okay, I'm trying not to hit on her subject. Still, I'm looking at the legislators' priorities, and some of them she's already mentioned. But I want to focus real carefully on the fiscal year for South Carolina. For example, for South Carolina, as of November the 19th, 2018, Title I grant should be $246.5 million. And special education, which is the IDEA, is $186.8 million. And impact aid is $1.45 million. And Title I Supported Effort Instructional State Grants is $28 and $2 million. State Assessment is $6 and $1 million. And Title I English Language Arts is $4.5 million. Title IV is Student Support and Academic Enrichment should receive $17.6 million. Career and Technology Education State Grant should be $21.4 million. And also, I was...
Was that a B? Was that a B? A billion? Or a million?
Million. Million. All of them in a million, okay? Wish it was a billion. All right? And also, I was surprised and excited because they were talking about school safety. And the National Board has a booklet out for board members about fostering school safety. And we know that we have a good program that's going on, and a lot of things taking place to protect our children. But this is very interesting in how board members can respond and what we need to do. And I just have one copy, but I'm sure that you probably could write to Alexander, Virginia, and get another copy, get some other copies for others to see. It's very interesting and also will help us in making some decisions and everything in keeping our children safe. And it also pointed out and brought up about mental issues as well in here. So we know we're working on that as well, the people here at the district office. Working with law enforcers, like the policemen and whatever, to help keep children safe. So it's a lot of good information in here for us to become aware of as board members and be able to move forward with that. So, okay, I think I'll stop there.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Reed, would you like to talk a little bit about the legislative meeting?
Yes. Well, as you know, South Carolina Education Association is the voice for education in South Carolina. And from the meeting that we went to, and it was well-attended by, I think it was, well, it wasn't quite 100% of school districts that belonged to SCEA, but I'm thinking it was, oh, I don't have the numbers before me, but over, it was well over 60, 70, 80%. I think it was maybe less than 20 school districts that were not members. The Legislative Conference was held at the Marriott in Charleston. Registration started Friday afternoon, and it was over Sunday. So the conference itself was well-attended by people from all across the state. We, the four of us, were members from Rock Hill. And there were others from Fort Mill there. I didn't see anybody from Clover there. And I'm not sure if anybody from York was there or not.
They were there.
York was there.
They were there.
But it was well-attended, and the slate of officers that they had proposed was 100% approved. All of the legislators who came to our conference were very receptive. They had chances to answer questions. And the first session started on Saturday morning with a welcome and the purpose that was given by the current president of SCSBA, Wesley Hightower. That was his last meeting. But after that, the legislative issues that were then discussed were presented by a panel of lawmakers from all across the state. The legislators that had been sent to Columbia to represent us, the citizens of the state. There were four of them present, two senators and two from the House of Representatives. So they were able to talk about things that they were looking forward to doing. Each had their own personal opinion as to what they thought would be coming up. And the questions that followed were questions that people in the audience had a chance to answer, to ask them for an answer. In addition to that, some of the debate was interesting to hear. Some of the comments were interesting to hear, and some of the comments that they made back were interesting to hear. But of course, that's just their opinion right now because the legislature does not begin until January. So the opinions that they give were really based on things that they have had experience with, things that they thought might be going to happen. But these are just their opinions. It was interesting, though, to find out that the budget director gave us an overview of anticipated revenue and expenditures for the next, for 2019. And I was interested in knowing whether or not we, Rock Hill, will be eligible to apply for some of those funds that have not been dedicated yet. These are new funds that have come into the state. And Mike Shealy, the budget director from the South Carolina Senate Finance Committee, was able to share with us some of the things that he thought could happen with the money, although it hasn't been, it has not been divvied up yet. But I'm hoping that some of that money can be applied for by our superintendent who can apply for some of those funds. There were sponsors for the breaks that we had. Coffee and rolls were given. And I enjoyed them. There weren't anything that you could really, you know, talk about except the rolls and the coffee, and you could get some tea if you wanted. But this is a time when school districts from across the state can get together, can talk in a social kind of setting, can get information that is important to hear, and that we, as members of the Board from Rock Hill, had a chance to interact with people from across the state. I am very pleased that Ms. Douglas allowed me to ride with her. She didn't run over anything. And we were able to get back to Rock Hill before the ice started to slick up the roads on Sunday. But I was very pleased to have a chance to go and to represent you to the best of my ability, and I think get some information that I hope will help me in making decisions that I'm able to make or ask questions about. I just appreciated the chance to go, and I'm hopeful that as you select people to go the next time, that they too will be able to benefit from the conversations that are heard.
Thank you so much, Ms. Reed.
Sure. So I'll briefly highlight Mike Shealy's presentation. So I am cautiously optimistic after what I've heard, although I'm not going to be holding my breath, because what we heard was actually terminology such as, "This is the year of education." We heard that there is extra money on the table. Now, "Why is there extra money on the table?" is what people start asking. Basically, there's a couple of big-ticket items. One of them was a stock market rally in December 2017 that contributed to the surplus. But we also saw higher-than-expected individual income tax payments and lower-than-expected refunds. So that's where the biggest chunk of the money is coming from. When it all goes together, they claim to have a projected surplus of about $500 million. Now, unfortunately, we're not the only ones who are interested in this. The line...
May I interrupt? That's one-time money.
Yes. I was going to get to that.
That's one-time money. This is not...
First of all, it is one-time money, which means that counting on this for future years would be very ill-advised. And number two is, you know, when you start taking a look at the other things that people in the state are looking for, just to kind of give you some ideas, you know, if they were to fully fund us, and I'm dreaming pie in the sky, if they would actually fully fund us with the base student cost, I would take the whole amount. So that's probably not going to happen, but hopefully, we'll see a little bit of a base student cost increase. They were talking about school resource officers. That would be about ballpark $20 million. However, we have to find these individuals because there is a shortage of them being, you know, churned out of the academy. So just because the money is there doesn't necessarily mean that we can find people who are interested in applying for the position.
I think the governor had an addendum on the end of that. Retired military police.
Yeah, there is retired military police. There is some discussions about potentially taking a look at Terry and, you know, going back on part of that. You know, but when you start taking a look at where the appropriations could come from, you know, we are not the only ones that are seeking this money. It is not all going to go to education. More than likely, we will get a little piece of the pie, but it won't be all of it. And I think it's very, very important to realize that this is, like Mr. Hutcherson said, it's one-time money. This is not something that we can count on for reoccurring costs. Now, I do have the slide deck. I was going to print it out, but I felt like wasting 80 pieces of paper was not advisable. So I'm going to send it in electronic format to all of the board members so that you can go through it. But one of the things that you will also hear is that, as you remember, on January 3rd at 4:30, we have the Catawba Regional Elected Officers Meeting. You should have gotten an invitation in the mail and via email. And Mike Shealy will actually be there and kind of go over a very similar version of this presentation. That one will be more focused on local government in general, not so much only on education, although we will be highlighting. So I'll send this to you so that you have some nice bedtime reading over the Christmas break. And that way, you know, you will walk into the elected forum and have a good idea where the numbers stand. But again, cautiously optimistic, I guess, is a nice way of looking at it, but not holding my breath. Regardless, it was very informative, like everybody else have said. I think it's always a nice opportunity for us to collaborate and hear professional development for school members. A lot of times, the struggles that we have are shared across the state, so it's always nice to hear other people's take on it. So can I just add one thing?
Oh, absolutely.
Everybody, if you were interested, you can go to scsba.org, Legislative Advocate Conference, and you will be able to see everything. Each one of the areas that we work on, just click on. Handouts and agenda, and 2018 will pop up, and you'll be able to see everything.
And actually, a lot of the PD going back several years is archived as well, so it's a great wealth of resource for everybody to go on there. Thanks to you for bringing that up.
That is all that I had. Does anybody else have anything they would like to add? Ms. Cole?
Yes, Chairperson. This past, excuse me, this past Thursday, while many of you were at the community Listen and Learn at South Point, I attended the We Are One, We Are Many, 50 Years Into Desegregation meeting. And we had two of our high school teachers speaking, four students, and there were probably close to 50 community members in attendance. And it was very informative, great conversations going on and questions. Was just totally amazed with all of our students and our teachers. A couple of things that came up that I feel a lot of our community needs to be more aware of is how do students get chosen for advanced classes? There's some miscommunication, I believe, that everything's based on your second-grade test scores and I... test scores, and, and I know that is not correct, but even some teachers were, were feeling that way. So, I think that's something that we need to get out more in the community. I was wondering if any of that would be covered with the School Choice Fair and District Expo, if some of that is covered at that time?
Absolutely, Ms. Cole. That, that'll be a great day for all the programs across the district to be highlighted. Also, the program of studies that Ms. Morrison's been working on will be available, and our guidance councils are a great resource, but I think we can certainly highlight some of these opportunities as we go forth in the, the next month or two. IGP conferences for middle schoolers are, are gonna begin in January, and that's a really good place to share, but we'll try and put some additional information out on the website as well.
That would be great, because I think there's a lot of miscommunication, and people don't know really where, where to look and what's options there are.
Did it, did it seem like people are confusing GT testing with advanced classes? Or no?
That, I, I think that wa, that was part of it. But even the teachers felt like, after second grade, the students really didn't have much of an option, that they were put on, on a track, and I know that there are lots of options, because my own child had several throughout the, the years of opportunities. Also, the teachers feel like they would like to have more professional development on understanding diversity.
Very good.
Excellent. And, and maybe even, when, when going back to the first issue, the advanced classes and, and maybe some of the, you know, if, if there's misunderstandings, maybe even having a fact sheet that is available somewhere on the district website to, to kind of make it easier to understand would be beneficial.
I, I do think there are lots of opportunities that we can certainly access. I think there are a lot of things that we already have in place. I would, especially being that we are stringing with our community, some of the most important, especially if you have a child, is being connected with the teachers and the councils, and I hear you saying some of the teachers, but, you know, being informed and having those conversations about individual children is also really an important part of the process. But we can certainly do that. And Dr. Holmes, who works with our professional development, I know monthly puts out a lot of opportunities, but we began back in the summer with having a speaker address the entire district on that, so it sounds like we just need to continue those efforts.
Right, and they appreciated that, but they said it, it's something that they think needs to continue through, throughout the, the year, not a, a one-time.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Cole?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I'm sure that when, when you were, when you were in, at the meeting in, in Charleston, that, as you have said, Mr. Shealy's report indicated that there was some excess money that is only one-time use, and you mentioned that there would be other people applying, but I want us to focus on what applies to education. I don't want them, I don't want people to be out trying to get money to fix the roads and fix the-
And, and you, you make a very valid point, and I think that it's very important for us to have those conversations, you, you know, with our local and state legislators to, 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 to have those conversations and, and explain what it is we need and why we need it. So, absolutely.
And we pro, we pro, we promise to be in, in the running for any monies that are available. We'll do our part.
And, you know, I already have some ideas about where we can use that.
Love it. So, does anybody else have anything else for the group?
I have one comment and then a request. Kind of related. On last Wednesday, we had the ribbon cutting for Cherry Park Elementary, so congratulations to Principal Pat Manis and the entire Cherry Park Elementary community. It was a wonderful event, and it was exciting to see so many folks there, so much community support and students and parents that were there, excited to see that new building. But sort of on a related note, I am, I'm concerned about the effect that the movement of those students to Cherry Park Elementary will have on the three schools where those students are coming from, Richmond Drive, Evanport, and Rosewood Elementary. So, I would love to see at, at a convenient time, Dr. Cook, some overall numbers on enrollment in all four of those schools, the newly-created Cherry Park Elementary, and then the three schools that, that helped feed Cherry Park Elementary. So, overall enrollment, and then just some demographics on the populations of, of all four of those schools, especially in terms of like free and reduced lunch and other demographic data that's available, and just some opportunity to present that information and, and have some discussion and recommendations if, if we see an issue with any of that data.
Yes, ma'am. We'll take care of it.
Thank you.
I think that's great. Any, anything else? Well, then, on behalf of the board, I think we wish everybody a very happy holiday. We are going to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel matters and contractual matter, and we do expect to take action after the executive session. So, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. It's been moved by Wendy Cole, seconded by Ms. Reed. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes, seven-zero. We are in open session, and we have a motion on the floor to uphold the administration's... Would you like to restate that since we're now rolling table?
And Madam Chair, a motion that we uphold the administration's recommendation regarding an employee grievance.
And this has been seconded by Mildred Douglas. We're in the middle of the discussion. Does anybody else have anything they would like to state? Bearing no further discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion passes, six-one, with Ms. Reed against. Do I have any other motions coming out of the executive session? Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we grant the request of a professional employee in School A to be released from their, to be released from the employee's contract with the district, and that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding the employee's breach of contract.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Reed. Do we have any discussion? Bearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes, seven-zero. Do I have any other motions coming out of executive session?
Yes, Madam Chairperson. I move that we grant the request of a professional employee in School B to be released from the employee's contract with the district, and that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding the employee's breach of contract.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Douglas. Motion made by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Douglas. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion passes, seven-zero. Do I have any further, no further motions, correct? Thank you so much. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, very much so.
I second.
It's been moved by Terry Hutchinson and seconded by Ms. Owens. I trust we have no discussion on this one? No? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, seven-zero. We stand adjourned, and we will see you next year.